So we would say take out your pencils and paper and sulfur.
I'm eating that.
Right.
Anybody else? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. It's the evening of presentations. So next presentation this evening, I'd like to invite in Brian Asherson, who's a teacher at the high school. I'm gonna help you get your PowerPoint up and going. But Brian, if you recall back a few meetings, Lynda Tanini had come to present as part of her experience last summer with the program that she was involved with. Brian was with Lynda in the same program. He'll get into it a little bit. He wasn't able to join us that evening, but he was able to accommodate us tonight. So we wanted to be able to have him in and to hear about your experience because it's really, I think, cool and exciting, particularly with the T teachers coming as well. Kind of gives a different perspective. So I don't want to take away your presentation. I'm gonna get your PowerPoint up right here for you. But welcome you this evening to share your thoughts with the school committee.
Namaste, and thank you for letting me come. And good evening, and I'll wait till he gets the presentation up.
Yep, I'm getting you there.
Because I don't remember what I put in it. As Dr. Lang said, I'm Brian Asherson, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about my experience with the Teachers for Global Classroom, which is an international field experience that has made me a better teacher. And I want to share that, how it's made me a better teacher, and some of the experiences I had that put it that way. And I'm also gonna highlight a little bit about the Teachers for Teacher Achievement and Excellence Program that will be joining us in the very near future. So the programs are offered and presented by the United States Department of State and a group called IRX, which helps manage the programs. And it leads towards a mutual understanding. It provides with an opportunity for international education and a way for us to kind of clear out those international borders when it comes to education and open it up for dialogue amongst teachers of different countries to kind of build a better community focusing on things such as global issues and education issues. So as you can see from the slides, some of the programs are there on the right. In the coming years, it's going to be a Fulbright Scholarship Program. So that's a pretty distinguished scholarship program. So it's pretty exciting. A little bit about the programs. They focus on bringing teachers together and training them in ways of opening, like I said, opening up the borders, training teachers to think beyond just their classroom, beyond just their school, beyond their community, and thinking in a global manner, and helping that progress from the teachers down to the students and give them the opportunity to start thinking that, hey, the little things I can do here might make a difference somewhere else in the world. And.
I'll go back, I'm sorry.
That's right. And through that training, it leads towards further opportunities, and it awarded some of us the opportunity to travel to different countries, to actually interact and work with teachers. And I had the blessings of going over to India. And part of this is a way to increase diplomacy as well and break down some of the barriers between different countries. The countries we traveled to were not necessarily known as the first-class countries in education. We weren't traveling to Finland. We were traveling to areas like, I went to India, and people went to Morocco, and Lynda Tanini went to Indonesia. So there were a variety of countries that are not necessarily known for their education, and the goal is to bring those countries together with us and start to make it a global education rather than per country.
Thank you, Dr. Lang.
So real quick about the program, and it kind of very similar between the TEA program and the TGC program. TGC program, we started off with online curriculum. We took what was cool, went to eight college credits worth of material. And it was a pretty intense program, giving us techniques for use in the classroom as well as kind of changing our mindsets. And from there, we had a symposium last February where we got together with all the different people traveling, regardless which country they were going to. That's when I got to meet my cohort members that were traveling to India. And in July, I had hopped on a plane and spent nearly three weeks in the country of India, which was amazing. And once all of that was completed, I came back and we, well, we, I, created an International Education Guide that I, you'll see my website later to share it. So both of them, again, focused on providing workshops to help teachers get better and to get a better understanding of this international culture. And while both, while in the country of India and while the TEA fellows will be here, there'll be workshops, or I went through workshops, learning about the Indian culture, learning about the Indian education system. I did some cultural excursions, visiting places like the Taj Mahal, and I'm gonna show some pictures in a moment. And then getting field experience. I spent some time, a whole week, working with one teacher in their particular school and really getting an understanding of how their education system works. So I went to India. My first part of the trip, I spent in Delhi, that is the capital of India. It's a big bustling city, and I got to meet some very influential education leaders, including the National Director of Education, and had an amazing lunch with him, and we talked about different philosophies that the different countries have in education. And we visited some of the schools there in the city. After that, I traveled to Cozicote, which is in the state of Kerala, where I spent a week with a host teacher. He was amazing. He actually came to UMass Lowell three years ago, two years ago. Two years ago, and he did his TEA experience here. He was in Tewksbury, but we won't hold that against him. And then from there, we traveled to Agro, which is famous for the Taj Mahal. We did a wrap-up of our experiences, trying to bring what is a very powerful experience together and begin work on our moving back to our own country. One thing that drives home my experience in India is this phrase, "Ateet diva bava," which means guest is God. And while I was there, they made me feel that way. At no point did I ever feel like I was anything less than the most amazing person in the world. So, Dr. Lang, if you. So going there, when I visited Delhi, it's an amazing city. We got to visit some of the schools. The picture on the left is my cohort of friends, lifelong friends now, that I got to experience it with. The guy in the front is one of our hosts, Rajesh. And they took us through the city. We got to see the good, the bad of Delhi, and there's a lot of both. They took us outside of the city to a little village, which it was amazing, this little village, and it's a picture of it on the bottom right. It's okay. And we got to experience a lot of the culture. But once we walked in that little village, which maybe had a population of about 50, they swarmed us for the entire time we were there, and everything they could show us, they tried to. We get to, they put us on an ox cart and dragged us through the city and celebrating and singing the entire way. It was like a mini parade, which was awesome. After that little village visit, we also got to visit some of the schools. We got to see some of the best and brightest students India had to offer in some of those schools. As you can see, their amazing yoga talent in the right. There's the district, not district, the Director of Education for the nation there, talking to the teachers and the students. He was amazing. He fielded some challenging questions that the teachers had about classroom choice and those type of things. And he took it all and he went with it. It was really amazing to see. The schools are very different than what we have here. Everything's, there's, it's, I would describe it like you would think a California school, no hallways, everything's kind of outdoors. There's no doors on the classrooms. The education style is very different as well. It's a lot more, what are you gonna do to get me to pass this test? And it's not teaching the student the whole meaning of being a human. It's, if you want to get a better life, you have to pass a test, memorize everything I tell you, which is unfortunate. And they are trying to make changes to it, and I think that's where this relationship that I've built with my fellow teachers is coming along. And, but it's, it's countrywide, and so it's gonna take a while. So visited those schools in Delhi, high schools, elementaries, they were all amazing. The kids put on amazing performances every time we walked in, and they always fed us. Food everywhere we went, there's meals. Some of the cultural places in Delhi, I got to see Red Fort, which was a monstrous fort that, from the 14th, 1500s all the way up to the 1700s, it was an active fort. Got to see some of their religious places like Extradom, which is the bottom left, and some of their amazing beautiful images the kids would create. That's all made with flower petals, that picture in the middle. And they would do that on the front hallway as you walk into the school, for every school that we went into. It may have been just for us, I don't know if it's there every day, but they're gorgeous, and everyone's a little different. But there's also the unfortunate part that not everybody is economically advantaged. The upper right, those are houses that you see there behind that pipe. They're basically whatever pieces of scrap they can find to build a house, and they just create these vast areas that are just cardboard and tarps and metal bits that they use to make houses. And it's unfortunate that a lot of those kids end up in unfortunate situations. We actually, by accident, but it actually worked out nicely, ended up seeing a youth prison and got to see some of these kids that, because they have no opportunity to get to go to school and get everything that we have the luxury of here in the US, these kids are ending in life of crime at the age of six. So it was a little tragic, but it was eye-opening in many different ways. Traveling down to Kotoko, as it's pronounced there. Walking into the school, they had an amazing presentation for us. Every school, regardless where we went, had an amazing presentation. Students performing their traditional dances and songs. And we got an opportunity when we were in Kotoko to talk and actually teach some of these students, which was really cool. Some of them had not seen, or will probably never see, an American again. And getting to, they swarm you, it's like locusts on honey. They just come after you, and they just want to talk with you and meet you. Every opportunity they could, I was taking selfies. Now the selfie king. Nice long rounds, it helps.
They made you a sign.
Yeah, they made us banner, there's probably about 20 of those plastered around the school. Just a morning, I'm planning on trying to get one printed for when our guests come to the TEA. This has inspired me, we're gonna, I'm gonna mention some things later. But we got to teach different classes. I could see some 10th graders, 11th graders, and 12th graders, and this is a very important time in their life. This is where they decide if they're going to go into college. They have to take an exam at the end of their 11th grade, at the end of their 12th grade. If they fail the exam, they're not going to college. Sort of like our SATs and ACTs, but this, yeah, you can't retake it. And failing is anything lower than a 98 percent. So that's because all, it's so competitive to get into these schools that the, those kids have no choice but to be perfect. And amazing kids. And unfortunately, many of them are also weeded out before they get to 11th and 12th because they just won't be able to hack it in the class. And we actually had, we got to see some other political things. There was a political issue where the students actually went on protest. High school students went on protest, and bottom right picture, some of them are standing there yelling and screaming. They're very peaceful about it, but they're very loud and interrupting classes of those that were still trying to learn. And a picture of the school we were at is there on the bottom left. The Yale building is actually the high school, and the white building is the construction of a college. So it rains a lot, a lot. If you weren't paying attention to the news, they had the worst monsoons they've had in years, and it gets very wet. So everything washes away. As I was there, I also got to visit some historical and cultural sites. The Western Ghats Mountains is a beautiful lush mountain range. I don't know how to describe it, it's so amazing. The mountains just climb really quickly and go up easily 4,000, 5,000 feet real quick, and everything's covered in a lush jungle. Got to see the Indian Ocean. The upper right-hand corner, got to see the Etical Caves, which are 6,000-year-old cave drawings or carvings. That is a sun god king in that picture, if you can make it out. And got to see some fun wildlife. We went through a tiger reserve, didn't get to see a good tiger, but we got to see the elephants and their wild habitat, and boars, and lots and lots and lots of deer. So it was an amazing trip. Coming back to Agro, we learned more cultural experiences beyond that. We got to see some traditional, what's called the raga, which is kind of like an Indian opera. It goes on for several, it took about two hours before they were finally done, the first song. They fed us the entire time. It was a lot of fun. Did some shopping, and of course, we saw the Taj Mahal, which is amazing. You should all go. So what, some of the things we learned is there's a lot of similarities, but there are some differences. We all have to meet high-demand education as determined by government, and I think we do a great job here in the US of not only following the curriculum as stated, but meeting those other things that aren't necessarily written down, like how to be a good person and how to interact with others. And I think that's something that all teachers desire to do, but in India, they seemed a little bit more handcuffed to the curriculum, to the point where I attended a PTO meeting, and some of the parents got mad that the other partner teacher and I were there because the kids weren't learning what was line two of the syllabus on that day, and said, we don't want these teachers here. And so the principal said, we're having them anyways. So it's nice to have that support there. So balancing the demand of the needs of the students and real life is a challenge regardless where we go. And having the resources necessary. Chelmsford is amazing. I'm so grateful that I teach here. The classroom I visited had a blackboard and just rows of benches, and no lights. They had just received a grant that they were installing projector, overhead projectors, but there's no computers for the projectors. So they are very limited on their resources. And I'm very grateful for everything I have in my classroom, teaching biotechnology. There's thousands of dollars' worth of equipment through grants and et cetera. But having that opportunity to teach these students, I'm very appreciative of what we have in Chelmsford. All teachers have a passion, and it was very evident that these teachers cared about their students. They'd do lunch with them to kind of catch up and make sure they're doing well and eating well at times. And it's, it's an appreciation for our students. I think that's really what drives teachers. And another big thing I learned is the culture. In India, the culture is, this is business, get it done. Here in Chelmsford, we have so much we offer the students, and the culture here is amazing, whether it's our activities and our sports. And I can't, it gave me a huge appreciation going over there for what we have here in Chelmsford. So it's, I thank you for that. So my big takeaway, I had to create a final conclusion on this, and my question going in is what does, what effect does culture have on science and education? And I walked in going, how does religion have effect? How does the social stigmas of, well, they technically don't have the caste system there anymore, it's still present. How do those type of things affect the education? How does the government affect the education? And there are a lot of similarities, and I could spend hours talking about that, and you can, and I'll share my Global Education Guide link with you in a moment. And that, if you want, you can go ahead and read that, and there's lots of. This whole idea of ateet diva bava, a guest is God, they made me feel like that when I was there. And I'm planning on sharing that with our TEA fellows as they come in. So as Dr. Hirsch mentioned, we're going to be learning who our hosts are this Thursday, and then the following Thursday, we get to meet them. And finally, on February 4th, we're going to be hosting our TEA fellows at Chelmsford High School. And every school I went into, they threw a big welcoming ceremony. And the five members of this year's Chelmsford High Cohort, we've planned, we're planning one of those as well. And we'd like to invite all of you. It's gonna be nice, bright and early, 7:19 in the morning on the 4th, and we'd love to have you come and greet people. We will have five international fellows. Don't know what countries they are from yet, but this could run the gamut from Cameroon to Ghana to India to all over the world. So we'd love for you to come and greet them. We're gonna try to get some of their performing groups, maybe the a cappella groups of the band to welcome them as well. And if any of you want to say a little welcome, we'd love to have you participate in that. Feel free to email me. And then some of the things we're gonna do, of course, they're gonna be visiting for five weeks on Mondays. And feel free to stop in on any of those days if you ever want to chat with them, they have amazing stories. These are some of the top teachers in the world. My hosts, while I was in India, one of them was recognized as the National Teacher of the Year this past year. We were so excited for her. And these are the kind of people that are coming over to us to learn how to become more accessible for the students and to improve their own education. So if they're treating us as one of the marks to follow, it's amazing. We're gonna be hosting lunches and socials during the schools so the students can interact with them, not necessarily in the classroom, and we can reach out to those students who don't have the five teachers. They will be back, I believe the schedule says March 5th for the school committee?
Yes.
So, okay, good. I'm glad I got that right. So they will be coming to visit you as well then. And then we're looking at possibly visiting elementary classrooms, getting them out of just the high school, see some of the other schools, and get them to experience all the amazing things Chelmsford has to offer. My website and blog, that is my Global Education Guide, where you can learn about my teaching philosophy and how it's changed because of this global visit. And you can read my whole blog of my entire trip, so if you have like a spare three or four hours to read. But there's more amazing pictures, so please feel free to visit that.
Anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Coming back to your classrooms in Chelmsford, after having spent this period in India, did you recognize, aha, now I understand how this student learns? Did you see a history, you know, you could make sense of their educational history because of your trip?
So, yes. So there are students who, you're talking, students have come from other countries.
Yes.
Yes, very much so. I've, I see things that I wouldn't have picked up on before.
That's fascinating, isn't it?
It's amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah, and my goal is beyond what I've learned, is to share this with my students. I've already started changing my curriculum, especially my environmental science class, to making kids think about, what is this world problem, and how can we fix it? Water quality, or energy use, or those type of things. So hoping to kind of grab those kids who have those experiences that I'm like, ah, I see.
It must make them so proud for you to have had such a positive experience and bring that back to the classroom and share it.
Oh, yes, thank you.
That's awesome.
So what's the traditional clothing you're wearing?
Okay, so I'm, India is a very big country, just like the US.
Sure, yeah.
And I'm wearing the traditional formal gear, or formal wear of the state of Kerala. India is shaped kind of like an upside-down hand. Delhi's up near the middle, and Kerala's down near the bottom tip. And it's hot. When I was there, it didn't drop below 98 degrees, and the humidity was never below 75 percent. So it was hot. And they wear, this is called a dhoti, it's kind of a fancy skirt. This is the formal one. They have one called a lungi, which is brightly colored. The dhotis are white with a gold stripe.
I don't know, I'm staying standing.
Would you like, I can?
Yeah, we'll get a better.
Okay. I'm wearing pants now because it's very cold here. So, yeah, they were typically, teachers would wear a button-down shirt like this and a dhoti to teach. There's things you can do with the skirt, to flip it up and make it more comfortable and easier to walk in, but I'm not gonna demonstrate that here.
How are teachers viewed over there? Are they respected, or they just, they had to do a job and get the kids to the next level?
That's a great question. It depends on where you are. Many of them are respected. They're not put up on pillars, but they're not, it's not the premier job, but it's a good job. A lot of, we got to visit a school that was training teachers. The, one of their biggest challenges, you can get your teaching certification after a year in college. And that's, there's, yep, you get one year, and some of the classes are, how do you make a model out of clay? And while that's, that'd be really cool to learn for my class, that doesn't get into the how to engage a student, how to reach out. And so that's some of the challenges there. But it's, they're recognized as being an important part of the community, but they're not a, yeah.
Not a prestigious job?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Is it just coincidental that both you and Lynda are science teachers, or do they look for science teachers for this program?
It is amazing that Chelmsford got more than one teacher. There were over 400 applicants from the US, and 70 of us were chosen. And when people started realizing we were both from the same school, some of the, even the people that were making the decisions, like, oh, interesting. So it doesn't happen that we're both, random chance.
Yeah, so they're teach from all fields in these programs?
And in fact, actually, I was originally waitlisted, and I found out sometime mid-September that, not this past year, but the previous year, that I was put in, and they were already two weeks into that really intense college course, and I had a lot of catching up to do.
Can you just talk, you said they treated you really respectfully, and they helped you to a, I don't know if you said on a platform or type thing. But can you explain a little bit about that, like what?
So every time you show up to a place, they give you the bindi, which is the mark they put on your forehead. It's a sign of utmost respect. They give you lays when they walk in. Everybody, they're throwing flower petals on the ground where you're walking, food, lots of food. They treat you to a banquet every time you walked into a building. And they always went out of their way to make you feel like you were amazing. So they would give up on any of their own things just to make sure that you were having the best time you could ever have.
Was that consistent throughout your stay?
Throughout, wherever I was, and whenever we went somewhere, it was that way. So people just, they would do anything they could to make you feel like you were amazing.
You said that the top-tier kids have the opportunity to move on in their education. What happens to the kids who don't?
A lot of them will go find jobs, or.
Have they had the technical training for them, or?
Not really.
Okay.
A lot of it becomes hands-on, I'm gonna go find a plumber to, they don't really have plumbing. But they'll go find somebody to kind of apprentice under, or figure out some way to help out the family, whether it's gardening or working in a store. Yeah, there's not a, not a whole lot of training for those who finish high school but don't move on to college. Those that do move on to college, it's 100 percent free, all the way through PhD.
Just one thing you said, before they get to like 11th and 12th grade, you had mentioned, I mean, they've actually like weeded children out of the school system entirely?
Yeah, so in the school I was, in the school I was in at 10th grade, they're kind of like, all right, you're not gonna be able to cut it in 11th and 12th. You might want to go consider doing other things. 11th and 12th grade are almost like a junior college, so.
It's like some real Hunger Games stuff right there.
I'd say probably maybe 20% or 30% of the kids end up dropping out at that 10th grade and not moving on to 11th and 12th. They still get like a completion after 10th grade, like a.
Right, but they've actually moved people out of, there's people gone out of the school system.
Yep.
That's incredible.
Okay.
Makes you appreciate our system.
Oh, yes.
I'm a fan, that's why I participate.
Anybody have anything else?
Did you notice, other than the college application, you know, test, is testing a big part of their system?
Yes, that's part of the reason. Yes, that's part of the reason they figure out how to weed people out. It's, it's a...
From elementary school on?
Elementary, not so much. Elementary, they're just very closer to what we have here for elementary. But once they start hitting those later years, it becomes, "I'm gonna lecture, you're gonna listen, you're gonna study at home, you're gonna take a test." And the tests, you fail the test, it's nice knowing you.
You'll find in many of the countries that there's comprehensive exams, and they usually start, would be what we consider sixth grade here. And that helps them decide what, like what class, next school they're gonna go to sometimes.
Because some areas like, yeah, it helps determine which school. So, one of the schools I visited in Delhi was the top school. And that's the one you saw, the Director of Education, because it says pride and joy. And you had to get like a perfect score and have excellent marks and have a rich parents to get into that school. And then, there's other lesser schools that you can still go through and still do pretty well. It's kind of a tiered school system.
What kinds of things did they want to find out about this place?
There are lots of good questions. There was one school I visited, they wanted to know all about our curriculum and all about teachers and how we interacted. And then, there was other ones that were like, "What's the food like? Do you all eat?" They all thought we ate Chinese food for lunch. I'm like, "No."
Sometimes.
Yeah. So, they want to know about the food and what some of the activities that the students would do. I brought along with me some slides, sharing some of the great activities Chumset High does. And they would ask questions about those. The questions varied.
Do they have misconceptions for movies?
For movies?
They have movies.
So, there were, we were...
Isn't I asking, sometimes you get questions about cowboys and guns. We got guns.
Yeah, we have guns, but...
There's a lot of misconceptions out there. I mean, even the T fellows that came last year, they did not believe that we had American flags in our classes. They thought that we made that up. And all of a sudden, they were like, "You guys really do," and you stand up and you do the Pledge of Allegiance. So, they don't understand some of the nuances that happen, same with us. We don't understand, that's part of the, even the T program is, first thing they do is they educate everyone onto how to handle each of the cultural differences. Like you may not be able to shake someone's hand, you may not be able to be in the same room as someone without another female in the room. There's all sorts of things, so you have to go through those cultural pieces before you can even get to the educational piece.
I did have someone propose to me.
You did?
Yeah, a high school kid. I was a little weirded out by that one, but...
He said no, right?
Yeah. Very happily married.
Well, thank you very much for hearing your experience.
Thank you for coming tonight. Presentation number four. So, we actually have Bill Silver, our Technology Director, and I know there's staff from Harris in the district as well. Bill is gonna provide us with a...